Okay. Thank you, everybody, and welcome back to the after lunch session of the budget session for the Salisbury City Council. We'll start off with the next item on the agenda, which is the city council. And that, for those who are looking, it's account 11000.
Repeat that again, Jack.
Hang on, let me get back to the document.
Because I'm off course, too. I am. Jack?
What?
Could you repeat that number again so I can get back on course? Okay. Where am I? Thank you.
Looking at it, essentially, the only thing that has really gone up is the increase in salaries for the council people. Other than that, everything else is in line. Anybody have any questions on it? Okay. That's fine. Mr. Boda, you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Angela?
No questions.
Michelle?
No questions.
Okay, I have none either. So let's go to the next item, which is city clerk. Diana, you on?
I'm here, yes.
All right, why don't you take us through the city clerks?
Well, basically, we have level funding again this year with the exception of the step increases that are across the board that are built in through the city. So we don't have much different. We have, I think, you know, some of the printing expenses. Sometimes those fluctuate in one of the line items, and that's due to the MUNO code function, so that we have our search engine and the different... Not too many people are getting print copies, but we still do have a few for the Salisbury Municipal Code that we distribute, whether that's internally or to some local, like the Wycomica Law Library and things like that. But for the most part, we are still level funding.
Great. Any questions for Diane? Mere?
No, looks good. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
April?
No.
Angela?
No questions.
Michelle?
No questions.
I just have one comment. Where is it now? Hold on. I saw it before. Yeah, the largest increase is $894, and that's for the retirement we talked about before with Keith. That's the catch-up on the retirement. So, okay, if there's no other questions, then let's go to the next one, which is the city attorney. Mark, are you here?
He's not. I just texted him. Maybe we could go to mayor's office since we're here?
Absolutely.
Andy, you want to take that?
The mayor's office, just for everybody, is...
12...
All right. Jack, there is... There really is no increases. We moved some money around in a couple accounts, just to flatten out some budgets. But through our essentials and our CIP, we did not have any increased funding added to our budget this year. Just a couple things, if you're looking at notes, like, we just moved a couple things between our computer and our computer software account to clean that up, to spread it out. But, yeah, if there's anything you want me to... I do see something that I need to figure out why it's like that.
Dues?
Yeah. That may...
Was that a transfer of a bunch of dues into there?
No, that may be a computation error. Keith, can we look at that one?
Did we rejoin National League of Cities, or did we not do that?
No.
And that may... I think that that may be... Keith, it's line 12,56700. Let's take a... Just think we want to take a peek at that. From what I have in my budget book, I think it's supposed to be 34,400. So that may just be a typo. I think dues is not... It's supposed to be 34,400. So... We'll look at that. I think there is just a computation error there.
Keith, you're still muted.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll research that.
Okay, yeah, that's on my list as well. All right, let's see if anyone has any questions other than that one issue. Mr. Boda?
The dues was my question, and I guess maybe the question is, have we considered rejoining National League of Cities, or is that something we're not going to pursue?
Not at this time. I know there's value, but I think the annual budget cost to the... It's a large item versus if folks want to take advantage of the conference, I think it's a better return on our dollar just to pay the out-of... You know, the out-of-network cost, or whatever it's called, to attend the conference.
Okay, let's go down. Anything else, Mere? No, that's it. April?
I'm disappointed, and you know I am, because if we were all to go to the NLC, we're going to spend a significant amount of money anyway, just in dues, but just us individually going. It was a great experience, and one thing I did understand, and I did get from that, is when you go to the NLC and you're not a member, a lot of those classes, and you can't get in them. You won't be able to get in them, not unless you pay for them yourself, and then you have such a long line trying to get in the lines to pay for them. And I really think that the NLC is worth being a member. I really do. Because I understand the MML, and that's all statewide, but you get an experience of being with people from other cities and states around the United States, and you also get to get ideals that... I think that they're doing in their cities and state that are not being done in Maryland. And that's just my spin, because I just knew that we were probably going, and I just... I don't know. I just... I'm kind of disappointed in that. I will say that. Not one for biting my tongue, but I'm not going to say it is what it is, because I'm upset about it. I'm really disappointed.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Angela?
Just how much is the membership for the...
It's about eight grand.
Oh, wow. Okay. No, I have no other questions.
Okay.
Would we be on par if we were to be a member? Would we be this... Are we like the average-sized city that would participate? Are they bigger, smaller?
We're a small city in the NLC. We're considered a small city.
Small city? Okay. That was a question I was just wondering about. No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. The only question I had was the dues, so that's fine. And Keith will get back to us on that one. Next up is human resources.
Mark is on, actually. If we could jump to legal.
Okay. Mark?
What?
Mark, you're up.
Okay, I'm here.
All right. The floor is yours.
Okay. As always, it's almost impossible for me to estimate what the costs are going to be. I had indicated earlier with the mayor that we were probably going to go... Come up this year about $40,000 short, primarily due to the fire company case. Because of the current situation and things kind of dying somewhat, that's probably going to be less than that, but we still come up with about $34,000 deficiency in this year. The fire company case, in all the years that it's been going on now, we're talking about $126,000 in fees. And we've made an effort to try and get rid of the case, but the lawyer on the other side seems determined to forge ahead. We had even discussed with him agreeing to mediation, and the city would be agreeable to that, but he insists that we drop the claims against all the individual defendants before he'll now go to mediation, which makes it impossible, because the only real leverage that the city has, of course, is being able to pursue the claims against the individuals who wrongly spent the money. Because the company, as far as we can tell, has bled through everything. So... But that's where we are.
Do we know if... Who's paying the bill for their attorney?
Well, what we do know is that much of that came out of the county money, which was supposed to be dedicated to equipment and, you know, capital-type projects. And we know that because we got their banking records, that they took, you know, $40,000 or $50,000 out of that account alone to pay the lawyer. And where the rest of it's coming from, we haven't figured all that out yet, but we recently filed a motion to compel him to produce the records he was supposed to produce, and the judge granted our order to compel and awarded us $2,000 in attorney's fees for having to file the motion. But, you know, he's already filed a motion to contest that, so it's just... It's unfortunate, but, you know, there's really not a whole lot we can do about it.
Okay. Are there any other... And you don't have to name them, but are there any other ongoing things that will carry into the new year?
That's the primary thing that'll carry into the new year. The rest of it is pretty much, you know, business as usual.
Okay.
And our bills were really in the business-as-usual mode until, you know, we had a couple bill months that were higher, but they were within the average realm right up until the ... All the preparation for trial began in January, and then it just, boom, that's when the bills were, you know, more than $10,000 higher a month than they otherwise would have been.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
No, thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
Angela?
None.
Michelle?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Hopefully, we can resolve this issue this year.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
I was hoping that the... That, you know, the break in the fact that the courts are tied up... The court has not continued our case for July, but I fully expect that they will, because if they go back to opening the courts, criminal cases have priority over all civil cases, which means we're likely to be bumped anyway.
Gotcha.
That's why mediation, I think, would really serve everybody's interest at this point, but, you know, it makes no sense for us to drop our best, you know, claims in order to mediate.
Yeah, no. We got to be in it for the long haul. All right. Thank you. Julia, is Jeanie ready, or?
She is. She's here.
Hi, Jeanie.
She needs to unmute herself, though.
Got it.
There you go.
All right, Jean, you wanted to go over your essentials list, and then we'll go over your budget, your departmental budget, for everybody's information. Human Resources is 18500. It's 18500 accounts.
Okay.
All right, Jean, you're up.
It's all good. I think the only thing that is different in my salaries is because I have a career ladder promotion for Courtney. She's done... Met all the criteria for the career ladder promotion. And where I believe that we have some additional information as far as what we need to put into the budget for consulting fees this year is based solely on OPEP, which that's the other pension employee benefits, that we have to have a group of actuarians come in and do process these things for us and let us know what we owe, since we have to show that on our financial statements now for our retirees for the future. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Mr. Boda, any questions?
I see you have an increase on tuition as well.
A slight one, yes. We added one additional person in for $11,000, and that particular person is working in the IT department, doing the artificial intelligence scientist. So that person was added in this year. We didn't... She wasn't there last year.
Anything else?
I think that's...
No, that's it. April?
No, I don't have anything to say. Great job, Jeanie.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you.
You, too.
Angela?
No, no questions.
Michelle?
No questions.
Good. Thank you. We... I did have the same question. My question was on the consulting fees. Wasn't sure what that was, but that's good. We now know.
Yeah.
Jeanie, thank you. Keep doing it.
You're certainly welcome. I'm glad I was able to see everybody.
Keep doing a great job. Wish you would've been in person.
Thank you.
Be safe.
All right. Thank you. Bye now.
Next on our list is the government office building.
Jen's here.
Where is that?
Jennifer Miller's with us for that.
Okay.
It's 19500.
Thank you. Okay, go, Jen.
Okay. So just as a reminder for the council members, that the city and the county share in the expenses of the government office building, for the most part, 50/50. There are certain things that I budget for that are solely our expense, like wireless panic buttons in some of the city offices. I budget for cleaning of all the city offices separately from the county, so on and so forth. Really, the shared expenses are a collaborative effort between the city and the county to determine the priorities for the year, whether there are any... What types of improvements there are, maybe improvements to council chambers, or hallway lighting, or hallway flooring, or maybe you've noticed in the past year that the elevator cab got an upgrade, things like that. So that's a joint effort between city and the county to determine the priority of things that are done at the government office building. Looking at the budget to last year, some years, the operating expenses are larger than other years, only because of how maybe things are classified. Last year, we had more, what the county calls, capital expenses. They're not capital improvement items like we would consider them, but a lot of, say, smaller expenses, maybe replacing toilet partitions in the restroom, or upgrading, you know, the flooring, or the lighting, and so on and so forth. Not capitalized expenses, but larger dollar expenses. For FY20, we don't have as many of those. Actually, just a few, and honestly, council's going to be the benefactor of the ones for FY21. For FY21, we are planning to do two improvements to council chambers, one of which I believe is replacing, say, the curtains in council chambers. Look at that, yay, high five. So when you look at this year versus last year expenses for the GOB, some years it looks small, the years it looks higher, so on and so forth, but it's really only because of where the things that are planned for that year. Sometimes they fall under operating expenses, sometimes they don't. Now, for this year, we do expect to see an increase in some of the basic services, like utilities, electric, gas, water, sewer, so on and so forth. We also did plan for cleaning of the common area this year, and we did have, in this past year, a few other unbudgeted expenses that came up last minute, you know? A door doesn't work, like one of the front... One of the access doors had stopped working, we needed to get that fixed, or the AEDs needed to be replaced, so on and so forth. So we did make sure we're planning enough in contingency this year for those items as well. We also do budget for security guard services. That expense is higher than past years. I think some of the expenses that that position was seeing weren't necessarily properly classified to the position, so things like, maybe they need office supplies, or they need uniforms, or they need a new computer. The county was bearing those expenses in the past, but now it's being more appropriately classified under that position, and therefore, we can help absorb and share in that expense as well. So there was a little bit of an increase there. And then, last but not least, this year, as with last year, we are now planning for the $17,000 ESG payment to the county.
Okay. Jen, what would that fall under? When we talk about... You were talking about the guard stuff. What category would that fall under?
Operating, 546006.
That answers my... That answers one of my other questions. Good. Okay. All right. Mr. Boda, questions?
No, looks good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. April?
No questions.
Angela?
None. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Michelle?
No questions. Look forward to seeing the new curtains.
Yeah, I second that motion. Jen, just the one thing. You were talking about the variance from year to year, about some of those expenses. This year is $86,000 less total?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. And I looked that up, too. Do you want me to go down sort of over a list?
No.
Okay. There were... What we have wound up putting in FY20 were some things that we called deferred, actually, from FY19, things that didn't get budgeted in FY19 like they should have, so they all rolled into then FY20.
Gotcha. Okay. Fine, thank you. Jen, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Keep doing what you're doing. Keep saving this money. Bring those suppliers to death. I know you will. All right. Thanks, Jen.
Thanks. Would you also like to go over the procurement budget at all?
Yes, we're going to go over that now. That's on my list.
Okay.
Could you help me with the... Oh, wait a minute, I got it here.
You got it? 16000.
16000.
Yeah. All right.
Let me get to that sheet. 000. Got it. Okay, we're ready.
All right. So there is a little bit of an increase in salaries or personnel services for FY21, because I do have one employee that could potentially take advantage of the career ladder that we have in place. It would be the position of senior buyer, assuming he passes his certified professional public procurement buyer class and test. He's met the time and position, has had excellent performance reviews, so there would be a career ladder step for him there. So that's really the only change. Otherwise, we have... We remain with four full-time employees. Four is certainly adequate to continue the level of service that we provide. Other operating expenses for our department are relatively flat to last year. There was one essential item that we requested, and I believe got approved, that was actually for the CPPB training, the preparatory training, and exam and testing fees for the senior buyer.
Gotcha.
Yep. One other item that is an addition to my budget that is not normally in my budget, and it's reflected as a CIP item in the 577 series of GL accounts, is a computer replacement for my office. Per the information technology or information services computer replacement schedule, we were, I think, scheduled to get three or four new... Three new computers for this year. That was cut to one, but somehow, I think, the amount got changed somewhere. So you see a placeholder of $600 in one account for 577035, and then 577036 is 380. The 380 should likely cover the Microsoft Office licensing fees, but the 600 will only probably buy us half of a computer. So I'd like to request that that amount gets changed. Between the two accounts, I need 1560, which is a difference of like $580, so that we can purchase a full computer, and then the required licensing.
I would like to see you use that half-computer. That would be interesting to watch. All right, we'll see what we can do with that. Mere, any questions?
Well, she answered my question I had about the computer and the software, so that was going to be my question.
Okay. April?
No questions.
Angela?
None.
Michelle?
No questions. We just upgraded my son's computer, so I can totally understand why $600 is half of the computer.
Yeah, that was... That's one of the highlights of this presentation. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, thank you all. Have a good day.
Tell your group thank you also, and stay safe.
I will. Thank you.
Right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Keith, you ready?
Yes, I just got to unmute. I did that.
All right, and let me give you that number. The account is 15,1500.
Okay, it's going to be a little boring. Not much happened. There's nothing in the... So starting at 15,000, that's our general fund account. I do have two that I'll hit in water or sewer, but there was a small increase in the salaries pericles, just the steps, nothing special. There was bank fees of 5,000. We increased those. You heard my story last time about paymentists, and we will have an opportunity to absorb some of the convenience fees by our citizens. So we told you about the $1.85 in the savings.
Yeah.
And that's yet to be implemented. We've been hurry up and wait some more as it's got stuck in procurement, and the attorney, they've been discussing the contract. So... But it's... I think it's very close to getting signed, and we'll be on our way. But we didn't want to put enough money in there to make sure we didn't get caught short. But I don't expect... But I don't expect to spend all that. Postage is up 3,000. That's just truing it up based on the cost now that we're doing real estate tax billing. And printing went down 4,400. So we've probably increased that too much when we looked at that before. Again, trying to find out the true cost of the responsibility to do the real estate tax billing.
Got you.
There was $2,500 increase that OGA asked for for collections, just to keep that collection activity up to where it needed to be. And there is a small upgrades to hardware and software per bill in IT. So that's it for 15000. If you want to jump to 81570?
All right, next one, 81570. Let me get to it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, it's even more boring. There are no, no changes in in that org other than for the personnel. So it all remained the same. We were able to, in a career ladder, we have, one of our cashiers has been here a very long time, and we were able to elevate the career ladder to cashier one, cashier two, cashier three, based on time and position and their capabilities. So we were able to elevate or give, give an opportunity for one of the cashiers that's been here a long time to elevate to a cashier three. So we were happy to have that opportunity. Jumping ahead to 85070. That's the last one.
Yep.
And I don't see any cost changes other than last year, it looks like we had a computer, and this year we do not. So there was a reduction of 3,500, but otherwise, there was just some personnel costs that changed.
Got you. Okay.
Told you I was boring.
I like boring. Okay. Mira, any questions?
No, thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
April?
I'm all right. It's all right.
Okay. Angela?
No questions.
Michelle?
I'm good, no questions.
Okay, I have one question, and I'm not sure it has significance. Do we track days outstanding in collections?
We don't. We do have a metric. Every two weeks, when we're in the staff meeting, we present the delinquent balances for both miscellaneous AR and also personal property, so that we have eyes on that.
Fantastic. Is that
Anything that's over 120?
Go ahead.
So you dropped, you dropped off on that last paragraph.
No, I'm okay. I just, I was gonna say, it's, is that trend, is it trending or is it pretty stable?
Well, we had a nice drop, and then we had some very small creep in the personal property. In this last month, we had a spike.
Yeah, I think, I think that what we're gonna find is that spike is probably gonna continue for a couple of months.
Sorry about that. I think I left. I got dropped.
Okay. My, my question was, I think that you said there was a spike. I think you can, we can probably anticipate a spike for the next couple of months after you, after we through this, for sure.
Yeah, we had some, we probably had four accounts that were large that resulted in a significant amount of delinquency, but that they just did go delinquent. So they're not, it's not like they've been delinquent for many months.
Okay.
Spike. It's just a, they just did get on the delinquent list.
Okay. Keith, thank you. I can't thank you enough for your preparation for this thing. I hope it's getting easier for you as you go on, because it certainly has gotten easier for us. So I thank you for that. Please congratulate your team. Tell them that we appreciate all they do, and everybody should be safe.
Thank you. I will pass it along, and we appreciate it.
Right. Okay, next up. Do you want to go, Julia, do you want to go to infrastructure and development?
They're on for Wednesday.
Yeah, we can leave it Wednesday, Wednesday's fine, because we can prep now. We can get off of here and get ready for the work session, if that's all right.
Yeah, Bill is popping in. He just needed a couple of minutes since we were so ahead. Is there anybody else for today or?
No. That's it.
All right, well, yeah, maybe if you want to take five, Bill will be on. I called him when Keith started, and he said he needed 10:15.
Let's, let's do, let's do a 10-minute or 15, let's do 15 minutes. Okay, we can afford 15. All right, we'll be back in 15 minutes. Mr. Garrett, you're on. You have the you have the floor. Please go over your critical items, and then let's talk about the budget.
Okay. The critical items are comprised of a merit increase for our assistant director of information services, John O'Brien. He has, he's done amazing things for the department. His GIS division just kind of goes above and beyond, and he's been, he's been kind of holding steady since he joined the department, and we stood up the GIS division a few years ago. So I put in for a merit increase, which the mayor's office graciously approved. I think that's, that's a very, very good thing to show how much we appreciate what he does for the department. So that, that was a standard, standard merit increase. The other thing is, the other critical item was our 55,000 was the, the second stage of the, the was that critical item or was that, a second? Trying to figure out if that was a critical item, the high availability. See here.
You know, CIP?
I think that was CIP, not critical item. So, yeah. I believe that that was it for the critical items, yes.
Okay. You want to highlight anything on your budget?
I, the budget is fairly straightforward. I try to make sure every year that I put in, I kind of itemize line by line, every single dollar that we're spending. There are very few cases where I just have like a lump sum, for instance, on page, was this page 89 of the budget detail report, 18,513390, project 00100. That's just GIS consulting for other departmental projects. That's just a lump sum of 12,000 because it's one of those things where it depends on what other departments may need in order to to operate during the year. So we have just kind of a, what we use historically, we kind of budget that again for the, the next year to help with consulting for other departmental functions and needs. But otherwise, everything else is pretty much line by line by line. In the, the 18,000 org, 534502, the software, that is licensing for a lot of the just citywide softwares and and systems. If you go to the water and sewer, 84080 and 81080534502, that is, 90% of that is stuff for Amanda Pollock, for DID. We, to kind of consolidate consolidate functional purchasing and management of software. We took that over for DID about a year, a year or two ago. So everything in the water and sewer fund is for Amanda, and then there's some stuff from you that's in there that are for sewer side of things.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Boda?
Under the hardware, did you, did you move something from one account to the other from last year to this year, the virtual server?
That was part of the CIP. That's that, that's the, the high availability virtual array. I believe it was funded differently for FY21. Keith, can you, was it?
Yep. Two lines up from that. You'll see that there's an offset of a negative 55,900.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if that's what that was for.
Yeah, that, that's what that, that project was. Yeah, the 559 is the high availability virtual array. This year is gonna be going in the fire, in the, yeah, in the, the GOB. FY20's went in the fire department, so it's gonna give us the offsite kind of failover backup system that we need to make this thing fully functional.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Bill.
April?
No questions.
Angela?
None.
Michelle?
No questions.
Okay, I, you answered my question. I had the same question Mira did, and I saw it as I was asking it, so that, that's cleared up. Bill, thank you very much for what you do. I'm glad you got through the merit increase. That's good for your assistant. And please tell everyone in your department that we're, we're pulling form. Be careful and be safe.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good, good rest of your afternoon and enjoy your telework.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, if I'm correct, the only thing that we did not accomplish was the do we do the GOB Personnel Committee?
We did not. I've asked them to jump in at 8:30 on Wednesday to start us off, because I mean, it won't need a full hour, I don't think.
Great. Okay, I think that does it for today. I thank everybody. You know, it makes it so much easier when you guys are all prepared, and we're all prepared to do this. You, Angela, you and Michelle did not experience the five-day, eight-hour meetings that we used to have, and and a lot of it is due, obviously, to Keith's preparation for us and help. But you guys did a great job, and I thank you all for being prepared. Makes things a lot, a lot simpler. So we will reconvene at 4:30. If you get on at about 4:15, that'd be great, and then we'll go through the work session, and we'll finish up for the day.
Awesome. And will it be the same link?
Same link, yep. And Julia, thank you for covering. I'm gonna hop over and get on the other conference now.
The mayor actually, because there's two conflicting things in Delaware, and the governor's doing an address at two.
Okay, I'll jump over to the governor. Okay, thank you, everybody. See you at 4:15.
See you.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you.